Six o'clock, regular city council meeting. We reconvene from closed session. Anything reportable action, city clerk, attorney?
Thank you, mayor. No, there's no reportable action. Council convening closed session, but there is no reportable action.
Thank you. Madam clerk may have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Papino. Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here. Please join me, join me the silent prayer and pledge suit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That sounded really good in chorus, everyone.
Thank you. Replay statement, please.
This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetrolCable14.
Thank you. Next agenda item F, agenda approval addition and deletion council.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request if the council would allow me to table item L2, which is the, my appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission. I wanted to meet with all the applicants personally before I chose, and I have not been able to complete all of that yet. So I'd like to table that to the next meeting if that's okay with the council.
Thank you, council. All right, so we're going to table that item L2 in the next meeting. Thank you. And next agenda item is presentation. Subject, Galt Community of Character Coalition, Caring and Compassion.
My name is Lisa Klotz. I am a member of the Galt Community of Character Coalition, and it is my honor this evening to be able to present the awards for this month for caring and compassion. The first award that we'll be giving is to Gary and Benita Kiesler. Gary and Benita Kiesler are true examples of caring and compassion in the Galt community. With a senior gentleman, when a senior gentleman moved into their neighborhood, Gary and Benita introduced themselves and offered their help. Their new neighbor shared that he was a stroke survivor and would appreciate their help. Gary stepped up and offered to mow the lawn for his neighbor. The Kieslers have demonstrated kindness by regularly checking in with their neighbor and inquiring about his health and well-being. They also have been generous in loaning items to their neighbor who needed to borrow them or do without. While these acts of kindness may seem like small things, they meant a great deal to the well-being and daily life, the daily quality of life of their neighbor. Gary and Benita Kiesler show that their smallest everyday acts of caring and compassion can have tremendous beneficial impact on others. Gary and Benita Kiesler represent the very best of Galt as true role models for caring and compassion. And this award was nominated by Kent Pierce. And they are here today, Gary and Benita, and their neighbor. They brought them, they brought him along. So, no, you have to, you have to come here. No, no, we don't let you get off with that. You need to come here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You couldn't be neighbors with nicer people. And now we have to take your picture. You know, this is the way it's done. Tradition.
Can we get our picture?
Yes, yes. Go up in front, have the dais.
What?
Oh, right up here. All right, we have a second award, and I've been asked to read this one as well. When LaHeim was established in 2005 by Gloria Stemler and a group, let's see. When LaHeim was established in 2005 by Gloria Stemler and a group of dedicated women, the goal was to provide a safe place for women to gather. That continues today. LaHeim is truly a place of caring and compassion every day, thanks to its long-serving, dedicated, hard-working volunteers. As Board President Gail Weber has said, "These non-paid volunteers are more committed than any paid staff I have ever worked with. I always am surrounded by kindness every single day that I am here." Thanks to its volunteers, LaHeim has become the nonprofit organization that fills the gaps left by other nonprofits. LaHeim has donated over $9,000 to many, along with many items, including raffle baskets to local groups since May of 2021. Without the dedication of these volunteers and the care and compassion they have for the community of Galt, we would not have been as successful in serving the people of Galt. There are many different jobs to be done here that keep LaHeim a dynamic, unique, and important force for good. There are outside crafters who bring in handmade items to the boutique, Gail Parish, Linda Torelli, Vicky Cathwood, Cathwood, Deborah Coats, Casey Boucher, and Cynthia Huell. The volunteers who come in to sew, to cut, and assist customers in the boutique and work on projects help with the day-to-day operations, including Ellen Hendrickson, Yzura Strutman, Carolyn Miller, Gail Weber, Susan Lethbridge, Michelle Lincomfeldt, Ellie Rodriguez, and Ramona Temple. And then there are the amazing sidewalk sale ladies. Maria Sparks, Angie Bosque, Kathy Hill, Adele Wyckoff, Mary Valasquez, Loretta Borja, Mary Lou Lincomfeldt, and Nicole Morgan. These ladies open up on Tuesdays and Thursdays selling donated clothing and knickknacks and a wide variety of other items. This main funding source, hold on to your hat. This main funding source has brought in over $34,000. In 2023, selling clothing for a dollar or a little more and allows LaHeim to continue to carry on its mission helping people in Galt. The LaHeim sidewalk sale isn't just a fundraising vehicle. It's a social event for many of the regular customers. They come in to talk, to catch up, to have a cup of coffee, and to enjoy the goodies brought in to share. It is the highlight of the day for some of our senior residents above us in the Galt place and others in the community. The Galt Community of Character Coalition is honoring all of you today as a role model for caring and compassion. As Gail Weber has noted, helping one person might not change the world, but it could change the world for one person. The Volunteers of LaHeim was nominated by Gail Weber. Congratulations. So I want to thank the city council again for allowing us to come and honor these volunteers that really make a difference in our community in this very public venue. It's really important that everybody see the kind of people we are here in Galt and the work that we do. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you all for making Galt a wonderful place to live.
Any other council member want to make any comment?
Yeah, I just have a comment real quick. I know we're starting to leave, but I want to recognize both LaHeim for being a wonderful organization in the community like we did tonight. They also, if you ever have the opportunity, have a Keurig in their office, and it's open for coffee. But I also want to talk about Gary and Benita Kiesler. This is one act of kindness, but they are always at community events helping. And Gary's a member of our Rotary Club here in town and, I think, a past president, right? Yeah. And his lovely bride has just done a wonderful job with our community dinner. She is the turkey master. She can clean them and just works her tail off. And so I want to thank you both personally, on behalf of the council, for your efforts, not only with your wonderful neighbor, but also with everything you do in the community and your service above self. Thanks.
All right, I also like to thank you, Galt Community Character Coalition, their hard work, and also like to congratulate everybody who received the award today. And thank you, that's what the community service you guys doing, and as the small town is loving, we all living it. Thank you. All right, next agenda item is public comment. Madam clerk.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. First, we have Ken Lee.
Good evening, councilmembers. Ken Lee of Galt Place Senior Apartment. I wanted to bring up convenience, reliability, schedule, and pricing, because many seniors and veterans would opt to take transportation if it was readily available in the town, especially a fixed route bus that goes throughout town. A monthly inexpensive discount, monthly pass, would be nice too, just like the students get. They do have federal grants for transportation, carbon reduction benefit, economic development to boost business by the seniors. Maybe the flea market attendance would go up if a lot of the elderly could take a bus there, because they rely on friends and family to drive them there. And it would ease the shopping produce. And basically, maybe if they had access to more park and rides for the commuters. As a previous bus driver of school kids, handicapped, and seniors going to daily and weekly appointments, it's a sense of self-independence without relying on family and friends. Fulfill shopping needs and medical appointment. The ability to transfer to the 99 Express commuter route at a discount. Right now, you can take the bus there, and there's no transfer. You have to pay more and more, and you can end up paying $10 for a round trip. There's no on-and-off privileges. You pay and pay again as you get on and off the dial-a-ride. There is a dial-a-ride, but it takes planning. You have to call in advance, and then when you use it, you have to wait sometimes up to an hour and a half each way to get picked up and delivered to where you have to go. I know the right aid building can't be leased out yet, but until the financial concerns are cleared, I would like to see maybe a 99 cent only grocery outlet store to fill that vacancy. Because those two stores are designation that people would go to, because it is kind of out of the way. It would help the low-income, the seniors, unlimited and fixed incomes, as well as others in the community. And I would like to see if the flea market can get the produce match dollar-for-dollar back again. They used to match the food stamp. You give them $10, and they give you $10. That went away about two years ago. It would greatly assist financial budget as well as healthy nutritional eating. And we wanted to know when the police motor patrol will be in full operation. Besides traffic violations, where they also ticket vehicles with loud, blaring music, as it is starting to be on the upswing. Also, loud exhaust systems going around town too. So basically, if you stem it, it won't get as bad as other towns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, and I'm sorry, Mayu, okay, thank you.
Good evening. I am Chris Mayu. I am a longtime resident of Galt, and I'm bringing up a concern that I have with the speeding enforcement done on C Street and West C Street and South Emerald Oak in that area. I believe Galt Police Department is doing a great job with everything else. It seems like everything, Galt has no real high crime. But I think it's time to focus on implementing some type of speed control measures on that, because from Wagonway all the way to the end, there's no stop signs, there's no crosswalks, there's no, there's no speed bumps. And I've done some research regarding like speed bumps, speed humps, speed tables, regarding the response time of emergency vehicles. And I believe there is a, there is a delay in response due to speed controls with the emergency vehicles. But I was doing research on how they have specific ones that the fire departments or the ambulances straddle the speed tables. So that would not impede that. I'm just worried about, I have children that like to cross the street to go to their friend's house, and we have constant speeders. I'm not talking about 20, 26 and a 25. I'm talking about well over 30, disregard for people. I've had the numerous times of I'm walking my daughter across the street to her friend's house, car speeding, I do the whole, hey, slow down, and I get left with a middle finger, or they take off and they just go. There's no regard for the public safety there. And numerous school zone issues too. There's people that are, last week I almost witnessed somebody, they just roll the stop sign right there at Wagonway and C Street. So I know before that there was a, I've seen numerous officers patrol that area, but I haven't really seen any lately. And I know a couple of years ago, I got a ticket for a stop sign violation, and I learned my lesson. That was like $300, $400 ticket. So I believe that if people are getting tickets for this, they will basically spread the word and use the power of social media to be like, hey, slow down in this area, I just got a ticket. And it might be an angry, an angry reaction on there. And it might be an angry, an angry reaction on there, but I think right now, people, if they're having to pay fines for speeding, they'll get in the back of their head of, hey, maybe I should slow down in this area. I don't know any other areas around town, but from Wagonway all the way to the end is basically a straightaway. There's no, there's no corners that they got to slow down to. There was an accident a couple of months ago where somebody was reckless driving and hit a wall that was over there. And I'm just, I want to be proactive instead of reactive. I don't want to learn on the news that a child was severely disabled or killed just due to negligence of speed. Because I know a lot of people have children, grandchildren, and it's like, my children and neighbors' children should feel safe going over to their friend's house, crossing that road. It's like they're crossing, it's a residential road. It's not like Carillion or anything else where you would understand, hey, this is a busy, it's supposed to be 25. There's many people who go well over the speed limit. So I'm just asking maybe some enforcement over there. But other than that, I think Galt PD is doing good at taking care of what's needed, but just a little more effort in that area. So I don't want to end up having reading that, hey, a child got killed by a speeding person. And it's usually in the evenings when people are returning to work or in the mornings during school hours. It's like, I've seen like the speed trailers up there, and once those leave after a day, they're back to it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, thank you for your concern, and I believe Chief heard it and Public Work Department, Mike Selling, heard it. And they should contact you or if you want to make any comment, you can make a comment.
Staff will, you left your phone number on the slip. My staff will contact you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. No more comment, public comment? Thank you. Next agenda item, I report by City Council Member of Regional Board, Commission, and Committee. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yes, I want my colleagues to hold on to their seats for a second. I have really nothing to report. I know that sounds crazy. But we do have some SECOG meetings coming up. I just want to remind my colleagues that the Sacramento Valley Division meeting is on Friday, the 15th at nine, or I'm sorry, at 11 o'clock in Loomis. I plan on going. If you would like to go, certainly let me know, and I'm open to carpool and stuff. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papano?
On the 22nd of February, we had the Sacramento Metro Air Quality District Meeting, and among the exciting things we did was the appointment of a recent retiree to be interim director during an extended recruitment period. And we appointed people to the Budget and Personnel Committee and Hearing Board vacancies. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the 22nd, I also had a meeting with the Sacramento County Library Authority, which I represent the council on, and we discussed some budget things and actually a lot of different things. But the one thing that we discussed, which I thought was very interesting, and I wanted to kind of update the council and people that are here on, was we were renewing a safety contract for security at library branches. So this is basically Sacramento County, so it would include Galt, Ileton, all the Sacramento branches, every library branch that's in Sacramento County. And they had a presentation and they shared some interesting security topics. One of them was the rise in what they call incidents. So incident could be, I mean, you probably wonder like, what could an incident at a library be? Well, it could be, you know, vandalism, it could be crime, although there's not really a lot of like stealing going at the library. So in the discussion, we kind of narrowed down to really the bulk of the incidents were related to, I guess homelessness in the area, I suppose. Wasn't really vandalism, wasn't really crime, it was, you know, induced exposure, drug use. Drug use was a big one. And what kind of blew me away was that countywide, it was up 12%, which would include us. Now, they didn't give statistics specifically for Galt, but they just said in the county it's 12. But there was some particular branches within the city of Sacramento that were up 62%, which was staggering. And so for the discussion, we talked about, you know, why those branches were at risk. And some of them are in kind of areas that may be more prone to crime, but the bottom line is it was affected mainly by its proximity to camps and things. And so anyways, I know, I just want to bring that up because I know the library is a concern. I have been contacted, you know, you know, God forbid, we don't have a big problem with crime at our library here in Galt, but I have had some people reach out to me and not feel comfortable with bringing their kids to the library because somebody was sleeping next to the library or something like that. I don't know if we have any incidents directly, but I just want you to know that we're cognizant of that stuff and even one person, and, you know, we would take concern with that. But the safety at our library, I just wanted to let you know that we take that, you know, very seriously here. And it's a public space that children go to, and so I just wanted to update the council on that and that measures are being taken to up the security at those other branches and overall for the libraries. So that's what I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor Sandu. I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Myself, nothing to report tonight. Next agenda item J, information consent calendar. It is recommended the item 1 through 6 be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member. Council, any agenda item from the consent one poll? If is nobody want to poll any agenda item, I will ask, Madam Clerk, please, can you read from 1 through 6 on consent calendar?
Receiving file warrants for period ending February 21st, 2024. Minutes of the regular meeting of February 20th, 2024. Treasurers report for period ending January 2024. Grant funding allocation for the C Street enhancements project. Lease agreement with Storer Transit Systems, Inc. for warehouse space at 140 Enterprise Court in the city of Galt. Annual 2030 Galt General Plan and Housing Element Progress Report for 2023.
Thank you, thank you, madam. Any public comment on consent calendar?
No public comment.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
Is moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Lozano. May I have a rule call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Papano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes 5 to 0. Next agenda item is regular calendar, City Council's Office. Subject, Commission on Aging Member Appointment. Ms. Hubert?
So tonight, the recommendation is Vice Mayor Lozano and Councilmember Vandenberg appoint a community member to the Commission on Aging to fill one vacant position and remaining term ending December 2026, and one vacant position and remaining term ending December 2024. Vice Mayor Lozano appointed Robert Wilson to the Commission on Aging on January 17th, 2023, and Mr. Wilson resigned on February 3rd, 2024. And Councilmember Vandenberg appointed Robert Belay to the Commission on Aging on August 15th, and Mr. Belay resigned on September 27th. City staff advertised a vacancy on the city's website and social media sites, and two applications were received, and both applicants meet the required qualifications.
Thank you.
So Vice Mayor Lozano's appointment for December 2026.
Yeah, I want to thank the City Clerk's Office for doing the recruitment. I was able to speak with both applicants, and I think they're both well-qualified and will do a wonderful job for our Commission on Aging. I would like to appoint Brendan Moore to fill the position on the Commission on Aging.
And Councilmember Vandenberg for term ending December 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to thank everybody that applied. It's good to see the uptake in applications. And being that there's only two, I would like to appoint the other person, Dennis Oz McCall. Did I say that right? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we see if they'd like to say anything? I think they may both be.
Sure. If anybody here, whether they want to come to the podium, want to say something?
Maybe not.
Thank you. If it's not, then congratulations. Thank you. The next agenda item is L3, Public Safety Committee Member Appointment. Ms. Hubert?
So this is for Councilmember Vandenberg to appoint a community member to the Public Safety Committee to fill a vacant position and remaining term ending December 2024. Councilmember Vandenberg appointed Bryant Schaaf to the Public Safety Committee on December 15th, 2020, and he has since moved out of the area. Two applications were received, and both applicants meet the required qualifications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, thank you for applying. I would like to appoint Jessica Shelby, Selby, sorry, thank you.
And I know she is not here this evening.
Correct.
All right, thank you, and congratulations to Jessica Shelby. She was appointed on that Safety Committee. So Chief, next time, we're going to have a call.
Make sure she's there. Yes, we'll have that people.
Thank you. Next agenda item M, Communication.
None this evening.
Item N, City Clerk's Report?
None.
Thank you. And Comments by Staff. City Manager Chris Arias.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I believe we do have a couple of comments. I'll start with Amy Mendez, Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Briefly, just wanted to make a quick announcement on behalf of the city clerk, really. We had Supervisor Pat Hume had reached out to us and mentioned that he was going to be offering to sponsor a military banner in the downtown area. And so we've put that out on our newsletter, we've put it on our website, and we are going to start pushing that on on social media. But I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that's available, and anybody interested can reach out to the City Clerk's Office. That's it.
Thank you.
And the only other comment will be from me. You know, I want to say thank you to the council for the opportunity to serve a city manager. This is my second week. The first week was fantastic. If everything goes like the first week, I'm going to really love the gig. So I really appreciate the opportunity. I do want to take the time to thank the staff that have been helpful to me so far, especially Armando for filling in and being of great assistance and bringing me up to speed on some things that were going on. I sincerely appreciate that. And then the office staff that just gave me a nice warm welcome. So Amy, Tina, thank you, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comment from any other staff member? Thank you, sir. Next agenda item is comments by City Council Members and future agenda item. Vice Mayor Lozano?
Yeah, I'll start off by saying it's so great to see on our council meeting agenda the presentation of recognizing our citizens who do wonderful work in our community. And I want to thank the Community of Care Coalition. I see Ralph's back there hiding out, but he's been a part of that for a long time. Also, thank you for the public comment. We do respond and get back to people on issues, and so I want to thank you for that. Couple of items. I had the honor to attend with a Galt resident, Dan Shockley, who's been at our council meeting several times about ostomy awareness. And he had a resolution brought forward at the State Senate yesterday by Senator Nilo, our local representative, on Colon Cancer Awareness Month. And so it was great to be down there with him and see him and his organization get recognized for colon cancer awareness, which is the month of March. And so if you happen to see Dan, he will talk to you a lot. But he, congratulate him on that. He's been working really hard to provide education and tell his story about his genetic disorder, and so was happy to do that. Additionally, I want to bring up again, like I mentioned at last meeting, and to see if we could have the CERT organization come next meeting. I don't know if they're available, but maybe have them come and present what they do. And I would also like to see us have on the agenda the ability to make a donation to that organization. And then lastly, want to thank the city staff for all of the work they've done over the last several months and some uncertainties. And I know that takes a lot, and I've talked to many of you about this, but I appreciate you hanging in there and doing your best work. And as we heard tonight, we got potholes covered up quickly, and I really think that the staff is the forward-facing piece of this organization that drives customer service. And I really do appreciate every single one of our directors as well as their employees as well. So keep up the good work, and, you know, we will continue to do good things in our community. I know that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Papano?
I'd echo the last part of what Rich had to say at a lengthy meeting with our interim city manager and let him know that, you know, I had the utmost confidence in our, every department and the way that they've been, certainly all of our directors and the people that are behind them that, you know, are going to be next up when anybody moves on. So thank you all for that. Thank you all for fooling Chris into thinking that it's going to be easy by a quiet couple of weeks. We'll drop the bomb on him later. And I don't need to go into all the events or anything that I've been at, save one. The mayor and I were at a town hall meeting hosted in Elk Grove by the district attorney for the communities of Elk Grove and Galt. And it's good to see, as we've talked about before, that he's ready to take head-on the biggest things that we're facing. And one of the top ones up there is Councilmember Farmer was talking about the homeless issue. And while we don't have the budget or I don't think the need for a community prosecutor housed here like Elk Grove now has, it is good to know that we do have the district attorney's ear nonetheless. And I know the chief and his people know that, and they work well with him. So that's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have a few items. First, formally welcome Mr. Arias to our city manager seat, and hopefully we can get you a nameplate that stays on and doesn't keep falling off. We'll put it in the midterm budget. I wanted to congratulate the people who were appointed tonight for the committees and commissions, and I want to thank the people who applied for the Parks and Rec Commission for their patience. Again, it's not an appointment I take lightly. I think the Parks and Rec Commission with Measure Q in play now is going to be important, and I have some really good applicants, and so I'm going to be reaching out to the rest of them and meeting with them in person. I wanted to, uh, congratulate, uh, the people who were appointed tonight for the committees and, and commissions. And, and, and I want to thank the people who applied for the Parks and Rec Commission for their patience. Again, it's not an appointment I take lightly. I think, uh, the Parks and Rec Commission with Measure Q in play now is gonna be important. And I have some really good applicants. And so I'm gonna be reaching out to the rest of them and, and meeting with them in person before I make that decision. So, but, um, I just want to say, I want to echo what, um, Councilman Vandenberg said earlier. It's like, it was nice to see so many applicants. I mean, typically, we have vacancies for a long period of time. We've had cases where we had to advertise second, third time. But we've gotten multiple people applying. So, um, these are important things. And, uh, I, I put a lot of weight in those positions. And I, I hope that these people that were appointed, um, take these positions seriously and show up to these, these meetings. Um, because that's what we expect of them. Also, I want to thank Public Works for, um, taking care of the pavers down in Old Town on the crosswalks. It's been an ongoing thing. They look great. They did a good job. Hopefully they'll hold up. We'll see. But, uh, it's been an ongoing issue, so, uh, thank you for that. And also with the, uh, train, it's been quite the topic online about the train horns. And, uh, although, you know, I grew up with them and it doesn't bother me. A lot of people are bothered by the trains. And so I appreciate the quick and diligent work that I've seen you guys out, uh, staff and, and your guys out doing, you know, the sign upgrades and all the things that, that, uh, the railroad's requiring us to do to, to return the quiet zone. So they've been making quick work of it. And I'm just asking the community to be patient on that until they can get through that stuff. And then, uh, I, I wanted to comment a little bit about, uh, Mr. Mayhew's, um, comment. It's no secret to Chief, him and I, he and I have had many discussions about traffic stuff. But I just want to talk about this a little bit because Mr. Rice is here now. I would say that in my six years on council, that probably traffic-related complaints are probably top three at any given time. They're always in the top three. Um, and it's what I call small-town problems, you know? It, I mean, as Mr. Mayhew said, Galt PD does a great job with keeping like big crime under wraps, do a phenomenal job. Um, I don't have any complaints at all. And this isn't really even a complaint at all, just, uh, talking about, because I do get a lot of people that contact me rarely about traffic. And I think what happens is people get comfortable, you know, living in a small town. And they, uh, and they just, they drive the same streets over and over. And they just get really, you know, comfortable with that street and they start speeding. And, and it's unfortunately, you know, that something will happen and then they're gonna regret that. So, um, I, I know that Galt PD has done some things in the past. Um, we got new radar trailers they've been deploying, which has been awesome. And I, I bumped into the CSOs putting those out the other day, and I thank them for that. And they've been moving those all around and, and being really proactive with that. Uh, but I, I think, uh, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm asking if the council would support, and maybe Chief, you can get back to some of this, is I know that we did, uh, we were, you know, there was one time we were kind of ramping up social media from PD. Uh, I think Officer Steele did like a little, um, like a little video where he was talking about speeding and things like that. And I think having that stuff out there in people's mind and just kind of feeding into people's mind about that kind of stuff is, is very helpful. It's like subliminal when you're scrolling. And, and Galt PD has a huge amount of followers on their social media page. So that would be very helpful, reminding people what the, what the speed limits are in neighborhoods and that kind of stuff. And just maybe, you know, if we can maybe revisit like a zero tolerance period again, where we can just really just drop the hammer. Unfortunately, people just don't, you know, it's like Chris said, you know, they see the radar trailer, they do it. Once the trailer's gone, people just need to hit, hit in the pocketbook. It's just the bottom line. And, um, we just need to send a message that, you know, rolling stop signs or just running stop signs and going, you know, fifty miles an hour down a residential street is just not acceptable in our small town. You know, it's, it's a safety concern. So, um, the two questions I have for Chief, though, one is, can you update the, we, so we have, we just got, finally got our bike, right, or getting it? Or is it, can you update us on the motor officer situation on that, please?
Yes, we have two outfitted motorcycles that, um, are ready to go. And the second, um, officer, this week, Officer Gerardo is actually at motor school. So he has a two-week motor school. And if he qualifies out of that, you'll have your second motor on the street.
Great.
So, uh, Corporal Steele will do it, um, when he's available and not having trainees, because that's the first role of the corporal position. And, um, then, um, we'll have the full-time motor in the secondary position.
All right. Thank you for that update. It's like I said, just, so we're knowledgeable, we're aware of the issues, Chris, and we appreciate you coming to speak in. Um, but, uh, and, and hopefully we can, um, you know, do a few little tools in the shed to, to help even better with that. But, um, I think that's it. Uh, one last thing, just wanted to, uh, uh, give my condolences to the family of, uh, Mr. Don Howard. He was a friend of my dad's, um, longtime Galt resident on a business here, at a barber shop here. Um, his, his, his sons have businesses here. And he passed away, uh, a couple of weeks ago. He was a Navy veteran. He was in his late eighties. And so I just wanted to, um, send my former condolences to his family. And I think that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor Sandu. Thank you, Mr. Farmer, for, um, bringing up the quiet zones. It came to my attention multiple times through multiple people as well. So, and also, um, Councilman Papano, thank you for bringing up the, uh, the meeting you had about the District Attorney. It's, it's really glad to see that he got elected and is, uh, addressing citizens' concerns head-on. It's, it's really refreshing. Mr. Lozano, you asked us to support something, but legally, we didn't actually agree to any of it. So I, I'm willing to support that, but we need one more person for that to be another agenda item? Or did I misunderstand?
I think he got the support last meeting for that item. And staff's actually planning to bring that back at either the next meeting, I think the next meeting. So it's already been.
Very good. Thank you for staying on top of it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, myself, uh, first of all, thank you for staff, hardworking. And welcome to, uh, City Manager. And I also like to thank you, the public comments. And I also like to thank you, everybody come to the council meeting today. Self-stirring down. And I also join the ribbon-cut ceremony, uh, C, G and E Cleaning Business. Uh, congratulations to them. I wish for their success to the new business. And I also join on that, uh, ceremony with, uh, some staff members, Director Amy Mendez and, uh, City Manager. I also like to thank you, uh, Chris. Uh, your concern is, uh, I believe every council's concerned. And, uh, safety is everybody's top of priority. And staff working very good, all the staff, whatever they do. And that's everybody, community. I think that's it from my side, but today's meeting is very short. So I'm gonna give, um, Councilmember, if they want to make any comment, uh, second chance. If, if it's not, then six fifty, uh, adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.